Arbor Day to all of us. Please join me in observing a moment of silence. In honor of your, this evening being your last meeting, Councilman Smith, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It is my honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Domingo, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Lawler? Spicer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Atchison?
Here.
Going to council comments first. And we'll do it by precinct. Councilman Smith, or I'm sorry, Councilwoman Clark? If you have comments.
Um. Just wanna, um, I know that we have voted on a few things tonight. Um. I welcome all the new people and I just kinda wanna keep in perspective that, uh, that we have not met or did a face-to-face. And I would kinda like to do that, if possible, um, to, uh, go in chambers. We can definitely social distance in there. Um, I don't know if that's against the government guidelines or not, but, you know, that's something that we did when we were under Mayor Atchison. Um, we kinda got together and, you know, got an idea and got a feel of each other and I thought it was a good thing to do. So that's something I would like to look forward into doing, if possible.
Councilwoman Reed?
Well, I guess that was my same, uh, thought too. That we have like a little short retreat, meet and greet or something so that we would get to know each other. I think we need to, I would just like to be able to have everyone tell what their wishes for the city is. So that we can get all started working together instead of, uh, apart. We just need to bring things kinda together.
Precinct three, Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would like to say that it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with most of you. And I have certainly enjoyed my opportunity to serve the people of the third precinct and of Albion. And to the new council, I wish you all the luck in the world.
Work, uh, I don't believe Councilwoman Lawler is with us this evening, is she? No.
She's having difficulty getting on right now, I'm working on that.
Okay. Councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you, um. First of all, I want to thank God, um, for this amazing journey and experience. And secondly, I wanna thank my, my rock, my biggest supporter, um, my husband Wade, um, for his unwavering support during these last four years. Um, being elected to council in November 2016 was a very proud moment for me and I won't ever forget it. Um, I, I realize too that we don't grow when we stay inside our comfort zone. And accepting this position certainly changed and strengthened and empowered me for the better. Um, even when the devils, demons and haters tried in several forms to attack me and some of you participated in that. My faith in God sustained me through it all. It feels good to choose to leave. To my supporters, nothing but love for you. I'm pleased that I was able to help so many sitting in this chair. Uh, my priorities when I came to council was requiring transparency in city government, um, attracting employers and jobs to this community, um, creating opportunities for new housing development and exploring options for a 24-hour urgent care facility. We didn't, we don't have the 24 hours yet, but we do have an urgent care facility. Um, to the successors of these seats, congratulations to you all. And I know most of you are coming in feeling inadequate in terms of proper procedures, what to say, do, and whatnot, but understanding will come in time. You don't have to know it all right now, however, you do have valuable resources at your disposal. You have the city manager and in addition to her, or whomever is in that position, that's future point, you have Attorney Harkness. Um, he can advise you and with valuable information and he has a wealth of experience. So I say, call on him, use him, that's what he's there for. Um, and secondly, I want to, uh, well, lastly, I do wanna say that there's still much work to be done to move Albion positively forward. There is a role for each of us to play, whether it be sitting in this chair as an elected official or as a citizen. I encourage you all to work together for a prosperous Albion. So when you depart from the seat, you leave the city in a better state than when you took office. I want to especially thank the residents of precinct five for trusting in and supporting me. I am forever grateful. I'm grateful for the journey. In the words of, I believe it was Shakespeare, um, "All the world is but a stage and we all are players with entrances and exits." Again, thank you Albion and precinct five residents.
Evening, Councilwoman Lawler, do you have comments this evening?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I would firstly to say to Councilmember Al Smith, my, uh, my fellow, uh, my fellow American, I thank you for, um, everything, uh, just being with us and, um, giving the veterans the opportunity to have a voice, um, uh, besides mines and, um, just keep us, um, in your prayers and, um, thank you for, uh, serving. Uh, Mayor, uh, Dave Atchison, thank you for everything. I wish that we could have did a project together. Um, I tried to start one, but it didn't quite succeed. Um, COVID hit us, so, um, that kinda interfered with, um, with, with a project that, um, I really wanted to share with you, but, um, thank you. We did get, um, something done, um, a lot done. Um, so I appreciate you. Um, Jeanette Spicer, thank you, thank you, and thank you for, um, being on this journey with me for four years. Um, you are a great example of, um, no weapon formed against me shall prosper. I will look for that and, um, just kinda keep us in your prayers, if you don't mind, um, with this, uh, new council and I'm sure that we will do great for the city of Albion. Thank you and have a good journey.
Thank you, thank you.
Precinct six, Councilwoman Williamson?
Good evening, um, I'll be brief, but I wanted, uh, I, I think something that, uh, many in the public forget is that they have no idea what it's like to sit in one of these seats until they get there and I have a lot of respect for the work that each of my colleagues have done. Especially over the last four years, I wanna specifically thank, uh, Mayor Atchison for his leadership over the last two years. Um, the, the accomplishments listed in the proclamation that'll be read tonight are just a few of the highlights of the things that happened over the two years under his leadership. Um, I wanna thank Councilwoman Spicer for four, uh, great years representing the fifth precinct. And while none, none of it has been easy, um, you always stood your ground, you were, uh, very, you know, you were, you were an advocate for your precinct and for, uh, the people who, um, deserve more representation in our community and I appreciate that and thank you for that. And, uh, Councilmember Smith, um, thank you for your time on council. Um, again, everyone I think has had an interesting experience who's, uh, leaving our council, um, but it's all helped move the ship forward, even if it didn't feel like it in that moment. And so, um, I know this looks a little bit like making sausage sometimes on Monday nights. It's not, it's not easy, it's sometimes not pretty, um, but we did do some things and that's better than doing nothing. And I think I should mention that Mayor Atchison did help lead the effort through COVID-19 and keeping our city and city close together and I think that's, I think that's something that we need to mention, um, and, uh, thank him for. So again, I thank you all for your service, I'm looking forward to our, our next council. But again, the service of those who are leaving this council, uh, will not be forgotten, thank you.
I'm gonna take the opportunity to thank the community of Albion for giving me the opportunity to, uh, serve as mayor, it has been an honor. And the city employees, I thank you for your hard work and the support that I always got. Uh, particular thanks to Treasurer Tom Mead, Head of Public Safety Scott Kip, of course, our city attorney, Colin Harkness, you've, uh, you've put up with a lot and I appreciate that. And I thank Ms. Domingo, our city clerk, you have been a tremendous support, provided tremendous assistance and I greatly appreciate that. And last but not least, of course, is our city manager, Ms. Snyder, I think you're doing a great job, please keep it up. It, it has been interesting, uh, if Dr. Mitchell is listening in this evening, thank you so much Cheryl for all the support and ideas and counsel you gave me. Uh, was, helped me keep part of my sanity anyway. Uh, and then lastly, my colleagues on city council, uh, I appreciate, uh, it's been a pleasure for, uh, to work with you and, uh, to serve alongside you. Councilwoman Lynn Reed, you are a, an absolute inspiration, uh, all that you do. And, uh, I value your friendship and your hard dedicated effort for the community. Ms. Clark, you've been a very calming, uh, impact on the city council and it's always been a pleasure. We haven't agreed on every single thing, but it's always been a pleasure working with you. And then of course, Councilman Al Smith, uh, I think you've worked exceptionally hard and you've served your constituents in, uh, uh, wonderful fashion. And, uh, the rest of the folks on, on the city council, uh, it's been an interesting experience, a growth experience for myself. Markola, you probably one of the, the, uh, most dedicated people talking to your constituents and bringing things forward and I compliment you for that. And Jeanette, I think you've done a very good job and, uh, we have agreed on very little, but, uh, we have worked together. And of course, Councilman Williamson, uh, we're at opposite ends of the political spectrum, but both of us recognizes that the other one, uh, is working for the best interest of the city. And, uh, we can't ask for more than that. So for all of you, I appreciate your, your time and service on council. And, uh, the incoming council, I wish you nothing but tremendous success. Uh, and the best thing that I can do to help you with that is not show up at every council meeting and let you, uh, run the city council. So with that, um, I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, just very briefly, since, uh, some of the council wasn't here and some of the new council wasn't, I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce Lars Cavari, who is the new Assistant City Attorney with my office. You may be seeing his face, uh, on occasion, hopefully more so when COVID, uh, is no longer COVID. Uh, but, uh, uh, he is a, uh, 2014 grad of Oakland University and a 2020 grad of MSU Law and recently licensed. So he is eager to be put through his paces on the municipal front. So I just wanted to, you to put a name with a face, um, and so he'll be watching his first council meeting tonight, so go easy on him.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, this consent calendar is approved. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
All those, all those in, well, let's do a roll call on this one. Ms. Domingo, would you read the roll?
You guys wanna say goodnight today? Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Here.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes. We are adjourned.
City Manager Snyder, do I take over at this point?
So, so as a matter of procedure, what needs to happen is the clerk needs to swear in the new council members and the mayor and then at that point you can initiate the new meeting.
Okay, we'll start with the mayor. You'll repeat after me, I, Victoria Snyder.
I, Victoria Snyder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of city of Albion.
Of city of Albion.
Mayor.
Mayor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Vicki Clark, if you will please repeat after me, I, Vicki Clark.
I, Vicki Clark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
The United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of the state.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
City of Albion.
Of the city Albion.
Councilmember precinct number one.
Councilmember precinct one.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And Nora? I, Nora Jackson.
I, Nora Jackson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of the state.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of city of Albion.
Of the city of Albion.
Councilmember precinct number three.
Councilmember precinct three.
No, so help me God.
So help me God.
Markola? I, Markola Lawler.
I, Markola Lawler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of the state.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the city of Albion.
Of the city of Albion.
Councilmember precinct number four.
Councilmember precinct number four.
So help me God.
So help me God. Help me.
Okay, and last but not least, Linda? I, Linda Lanew.
I, Linda Lanew.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the city of Albion.
Of the city of Albion.
Councilmember precinct number five.
Councilmember precinct number five.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So I take it at this time, I call to order this meeting at 7:21 PM. City Clerk Domingo, do you do another roll call at this time?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Jackson?
Here, I'm sorry.
Lawler?
Here.
Lanew?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Snyder?
Here.
Okay, so first item on the agenda is a nomination of the mayor pro tem. Um, I open the floor to nominations.
Mayor Snyder?
I have one.
Snyder? I would like to request that we delay selecting a mayor pro tem tonight. I think that we, the council, should have a retreat, uh, Saturday morning. Uh, like a meet and greet, get to know each other. Uh, ask whatever questions we want to ask of each other. Uh, introduce what we would like to see done about the city. And then have the meet, ha- have the, on Monday night, we have seven days before we have to have a mayor pro tem. And then Monday night, maybe we could meet for an hour just to do the mayor pro tem.
Do I have a second for this motion?
Second.
I'll approve. So.
Ms. Mayor, generally there's discussion on a motion before there's a vote.
Okay, sorry. Is there a discussion? Anybody have comments?
I would just ask, um, like, just for clarification, City Attorney Harkness, with the recent, um, extension of the MDHHS order, are we allowed to gather in person? I know that order currently prohibits, um, more than two separate households coming together together. Um, would we allow to gather and have an in-person retreat? I know it is very important that we do so. Um, just can we do that under the current order?
No, the current, uh, MDHHS orders basically mandate that any, any work, which this would fall under the category of work that can be done remotely, must be done remotely. So it'd have to be done via, if it was going to be done, it would have to be done, uh, via Zoom.
And under the recent orders, how long is this extended to?
Uh, currently, the, with, actually, they were just amended again today, so it goes at least until December 20th. Um, and as Ms. Reed indicated, our, our charter reads as follows for, um, approving the, the, the pro tem. Basically, it mandates, uh, that obviously the council organ, meets and organizes tonight. And you're supposed to select a pro tem at tonight's meeting or within one week thereafter. So, um, if you don't do it tonight, it has to be done by next Monday or the council would be in violation of the charter.
Further discussion? Yep. Mayor Pro Tem Williamson?
So, um, so just so we're clear, we're not allowed to meet in person. So if we were gonna do something where we had a work session, it would still have to be via Zoom. Um, and then we would have to have, we'd have to call a special meeting for the following Monday. So, um, I guess if we approve this motion, we'd have to approve it with those caveats. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear about that.
Okay, fine, that's fine. Then let's do it like this, I just, I know your names, but there's so many of you I know nothing about.
I mean, could we have, and, and somebody correct me if I am wrong, could we do, uh, and I don't know if it's called a study session? Um, maybe this weekend so that we can get to know each other a little bit more before we make this decision?
Yes.
Alright, so, um, I don't know if I need a motion on that since I'm the one that brought it up, um, but do I have a second on that?
Well, we're already in a main, we're already in discussion on a main motion. Lynn, uh, Councilmember Reed could just accept that, the changes of making it a Zoom meeting and having it be a special session. Uh, plus, we have to do our work in the public, so the public has to be allowed to watch us meet no matter what we're doing. So, um, so if we vote on, uh, Councilmember Reed's main motion, we're basically approving us a special meeting on Saturday, uh, via Zoom and then, uh, upcalling a special meeting for Monday, uh, just because MDHS requires us to do it that way.
Okay, so then at this time, do we have City Clerk Domingo, um, take a vote or do the roll call or vote?
So I think Councilwoman Reed should probably clarify that she's accepting that as a friendly amendment.
I accept that as a friendly amendment.
And then point of information, I believe all of our votes need to be roll call votes according to order by the governor. So any vote we take tonight, uh, Clerk Domingo is gonna have to get used to saying our names over and over again.
So City Clerk Domingo, if you would take the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanew?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Okay, so next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or do we need to have City Clerk Domingo do another roll call? Okay. Alright, City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanew?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Okay, so we're on to the presentations and recognitions. Uh, first on our list is Mayor Atchison. The city of Albion proclamation honoring Dave Atchison mayor. Whereas the city of Albion acknowledges the many contributions of Dave Atchison, mayor of the city of Albion, beginning December 2018 and serving until December 2020. And whereas David Atchison's service as mayor was distinguished by his establishment of the Recreation Commission and the Arts Commission. And whereas Dave Atchison has been instrumental in prioritizing precinct one roads, streets and sidewalk projects. And whereas Dave Atchison has championed more investment and improvement in Highland Park. And whereas, through his leadership and collaboration with community leaders, the city of Albion has safely navigated the COVID-19 crisis. Whereas on behalf of the citizens of Albion, we express our gratitude and appreciation for David Atchison's term of exceptional leadership and service to the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Victoria Snyder, joined by the members of the Albion City Council, do hereby applaud the leadership of Dave Atchison and his many contributions and distinguished service to the city council of Albion.
Yes.
Next is a presentation honoring Al Smith. The City of Albion proclamation honoring Al Smith, Councilmember Third Precinct. Whereas the City of Albion acknowledges the contributions of Al Smith, Councilmember representing the Third Precinct, beginning November eighteenth, twenty nineteen, and serving until December seventh, twenty twenty. And whereas Al Smith's service has been distinguished by share the voice of the citizens of the Third Precinct. Whereas on behalf of the citizens of Albion, we express our gratitude and appreciation for Al Smith's years of leadership and service to the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Victoria Snyder, joined by the members of the Albion City Council, do hereby applaud the leadership of Al Smith and his many contributions and distinguished service to the City Council of Albion.
Yes.
And lastly is our proclamation for Jeanette Spicer. City of Albion proclamation honoring Jeanette Spicer, Councilmember Fifth Precinct. Whereas the City of Albion acknowledges the contributions of Jeanette Spicer, Councilmember representing the Fifth Precinct, beginning December twenty sixteen and serving until December twenty twenty. Whereas Jeanette Spicer's service has been distinguished by many anti-racism and equity issues as a centerpiece of her tenure. Whereas on behalf of the citizens of Albion, we express our gratitude and appreciation for Jeanette Spicer's years of leadership and service to the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Victoria Snyder, joined by the members of the Albion City Council, do hereby applaud the leadership of Jeanette Spicer and her many contributions and distinguished service to the City of Albion. So our next agenda item is our public hearing.
Mayor, I do want to, please note that City Clerk Domingo did send out an updated agenda earlier this afternoon. We do have one additional presentation on the YMCA recreation activities.
All right, you're correct. So we have a presentation by the YMCA recreation programs. At this time, City Manager Snyder, do you want to take over? Is Jill?
Yes, Jill Heim with the Y, she should be with us. Chief, can you please make, give her access to speak at this time?
It'll be under Dr. Jay in the Zoom link, they're together with the same computer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We come to you from Washington Gardner High School. We are appropriately safe with a screen between us, sharing a computer this evening. I'm Dr. Johnson.
And I'm Jill Heim from the YMCA. Haley, are we ready to go ahead and kick this off?
You sure?
All right, if you can go to the second slide. So we talked a little bit about, last week, about the possibility of the Y and the city partnering for recreation, and we wanted to spell that out a little more fully tonight, because I think it's part of both a shorter term and a longer term opportu- opportunity that pulls in a lot of different partners. So what we're proposing, or what we would like to see happen, is really currently only the youth in Battle Creek are consistently served by the Y. And as a national organization with a presence in Battle Creek, the Y can really go to where the need is. So we were able to begin programming in Albion in the COVID nineteen pandemic with the assistance of the City Council. And we would like to continue that and maybe build on a more county-wide approach for youth and wellness, which are both pillars for the YMCA. So if you could go to the next slide. So we really view this right now as a collaborative platform in a partnership that's broader than just the YMCA, but also encompasses a partnership with Albion College, which is one of the reasons that we're coming to you from the room that I took seventh grade English in a very long time ago in Washington Gardner. So we view this as really a once-in-a-generation collaboration that would serve not only youth, but adults and seniors in Albion. And what makes it advantageous or a possibility for the Y to come to Albion is the partnership with Albion College in their historic renovation and transformation of Washington Gardner. And the intention, and Dr. Johnson can speak a little more fully to that, is to turn it into a community center that provides many different types of programming, not only for the college, but for the community as well. And then another piece that the Y would bring in this partnership is the Great Start Readiness program, which is a subsidized preschool program that we're currently running at Crowell School. It's virtual now because of COVID, obviously, but that provides a really great opportunity for the Y to partner with Albion College and their education department. So if you could go to the next slide. So one of the things that we know is important for this partnership to be successful with the Y and the city is really local oversight and local involvement. And so, as you can see that we've spelled out there, the intention would be to have a local staff, a local director, a local staff who run the program, and then also an advisory task force that would not only help in the creation and implementation of programming, but that would also work on grant activity and kind of be the liaison between the Y, the city, and the college in that program. Uh, next slide. So really, what the Y is about is healthy living, youth development, and social responsibility. And so working with the Albion community and the City Council this summer, we created programs in the arena of youth and wellness. And then this is just kind of an over, overview of some of the other programs in the services that a Y provides. And it really spans from childhood and preschool to active seniors. So if you could go to the next slide. So what we did this summer was work with community partners to create programs. The, the photos that you're seeing are from summer camp that we ran in partnership with the city in a memorandum of understanding, and that is, we, the camp was in Holland Park, and then the kids also took field trips to the Baum Theater and to the Wise Multi-Sport Center. So we really, I think, built a really exciting platform of recreation offerings during a time when, obviously, the world for these kids was very different, and the opportunities were very different due to the pandemic. And so that's just one snapshot of a program that the Y was able to and in the recreation format. So if you could go to the next slide. So these are the twenty twenty programs that we developed in the partnership with the city. We obviously had the Holland Park Summer Camp. We started a Kids and Stuff childcare for emergency service workers early on in the pandemic, and then expanded that to a summer camp with a partnership with the council. We started a fitness and a feature program for seniors in a partnership with the Baum Theater. It was a chair-focused fitness class for seniors, and then they saw a matinee movie. Hip-hop step was really popular. We had, on average, twenty-five to sixty Albion residents a week in that program, and that utilized several different sites, including Double Vision and the Victory Park Pavilion. And then, I think, as I touched on earlier, we have the, we, this fall, got the Great Start Readiness Program seats for preschool. So those were the programs that did exist. We would look to continue those. And then if you go to the next slide. These are additional possible programs. And one thing I wanted to really make sure that we're clear is that we would really like to have that local task force and oversight, so that that can help with kind of the development of the programs. So these are some of the ones that Albion Recreation has run historically. They are suggestions, and they can either, you know, be added or deleted as the representation determines. And if you go to the next slide, this is just kind of an overview of kind of the core programs that we have at the Y, and one of them that I will highlight is that we do annual events, which are five K, ten K runs. We do a community open water lake swim, and we also do a corporate cup, which is where businesses and organizations compete each other, compete against each other, kind of in an Olympic format. So there are events that would be really great to bring to Albion, to bring the community together. And we would look to potentially bring in some of these programs if there was interest in that. And then, at the end of the day, the Y is also five oh one C three charity, and so during the pandemic, we've done a lot of charitable work, including giving out diapers and food to the community. So if you can go to the next slide. So obviously, this wouldn't be possible without these partners that are at the table right now, which makes this, again, kind of that once-in-a-generation opportunity. But you can see, and this is not a complete list, obviously, but it is some of the key partners that are at the table that are interested in helping with this partnership and more fully bringing the Y and its offerings to Albion. And then I think that's.
So I just wanted to, I just wanted to finish the presentation by adding the the college's perspective. I think we're still here. I hope everyone can, can hear me. Zoom is doing something on the screen. I, I just wanted to say that, you know, this is an exciting opportunity for the community, and for those of you who haven't met me yet, you should know that one of the first meetings I had with community members in the backyard of the President's House was a discussion with, you know, Bob and Maola Duncan, Dunklin, and Hazel Elias, and Dr. Curtis, and several other members of the, of the African-American community to talk about how we might together bring this building back to life as a shared facility for both the community and the college. And one of the challenges to doing that is, is having an organizational partner on the other side who is prepared with the organizational infrastructure to step in and offer community programming at a pretty high level. And so when Jill and I met each other and started talking about the possibilities of this building coming together, it, it was exciting. And what we've come to now is, is that we may even be able to preserve the old gym in the building as a community gym with the Wildcat paintings on the walls, if the Y comes into the building with us. Unfortunately, we have a faster timeline than is sometimes comfortable in communities, and I think it's even a little uncomfortable for Jill, to be honest with you. But the college is putting together final design plans for the building, and I intend to take a, a design to the board of trustees in January for their approval. And so if, if the Y is going to join us in this facility, we need to know that sooner rather than later. And one of the key elements there is whether or not they are a partner with the city. I've, I've met with your city mayor several times now. I think she is extremely competent and, and very effective as your, as your city advocate. And we've talked about other partnerships down the road, too, that the college is very interested in doing. We're very interested in partnering with the city in a more active way around the parks to, to help there where we can. We're interested in partnering with the city on some other things as well, and, and in opening the campus up much more fully to the community as we move forward. I'm talking with, with some members of the Healthcare Alliance about perhaps using some college property for relocation of the food distribution facilities that currently are housed in the food hub, which is going to be sold to another interest soon. So I, I just wanted to sort of add that this is, from my perspective, a win-win-win all the way around. It's about the kids and the community, and my belief that we need to have a place where they can call home. And this building seems to be the appropriate building to do that, given its history. So I hope that the City Council will think carefully about this partnership as a three-way partnership between the city, the YMCA, and the college, and as the beginning of something really fantastic as we go forward in new partnership.
City Manager Snyder, do you have additional comments?
I don't. I guess I would open this up to council if you have any questions or any comments that you would like to, to add.
I do.
Councilwoman Lawler. Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say that this will be an awesome idea for Albion, considering our recreation department needs help. I am also excited that if the city was to please, please, please partner with the college, the Fourth Precinct does not have a park. So it will be exciting to us if we had the Y in our precinct. Thank you for putting all this together, Ms. Jill and Dr. Jay. I'm looking forward to lots of projects and, and recreation around Albion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lawler.
We are, too.
Well, Jill, I, I'm sorry, Councilor Clark, go ahead.
So, um, um, City Manager, at this time, because we do have a recreation director, and he was present at the last meeting, but there was very little said by him. Where would that stand if we vote forward with that, this?
Yes, as you were, it is an, an additional discussion either for later on in the agenda. I was planning to lay out both options on what the currents, our current recreations, what that would entail for our current recreation staff moving forward. So I can share that with you now, or else we can save that for the later discussion. That discussion.
So we're not going to vote on this?
Not right, not right now. It will be later on in the agenda. This is just follow-up questions to their presentation.
Okay, yes, I can wait.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes, Jill, I just wanted to tell you thank you for the presentation. It was broader, and it did come together for some of my thoughts. And then also being able to speak to one of the individuals that are a part of helping. We did talk, and they clarified some other things so that I can understand more. Also, Dr. Johnson, thank you also. So I do believe, just what I'm hearing now and what you have actually shown, that this will help Albion, because I do see that you are trying to take the bigger bulk to save Albion, so that we can get more children than what we are reaching right now. So I tell you, thank you, Jill, and Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson.
I had a comment, too.
Yes, Councilwoman Lanew?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for your presentation. I saw an emphasis on the local advisory board, and I just wanted to further highlight that. I think that's going to be a very important part as we shift gears in a pretty large way for people to understand that residents' voices are able to have a pivotal part in this. And so I'm just going to encourage people to, is it, do they apply to the city normally, or is that going to be, once we approve, you know, further direction given? That was my first question. And then my second question was, I think that I saw that we already do have a Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission that's formed in the city, and just making sure I understand, those are two different groups.
I would, I think I would defer to the city on that and what that, what that process would be. But I think the way that we have set it up is that the, the city would appoint two representatives. to that task force and whether or not they're part of the recreation group would be at your choice or your discretion.
Yes, so if this is a route that the council ultimately decides to go, we will have further discussions on how to kind of formalize that advisory task force.
Thank you.
Any other council comments or questions?
Just for Dr. Johnson?
Yes, Councilwoman Reed?
That came up, was a picture of me and the gentleman who does the aerobics with, with the Y. Because I was, I was telling him that I've been working in Holland Park for the last four years and there is room down there for them to have a place located to where they can do it in a, in a, a nice decent area. But I talked with Jill before. She and I have talked several times. I'm, I'm glad to see this moving forward.
Great, great.
And Councilwoman Williamson?
I was, I was just going to add that because the committee that would be doing rec with, you know, the new committee form that we could appoint some people to, because it's kind of outside of the city, it would allow for some of those rules to, to not, those barriers to not be in place for service for those who want to still participate in the conversation, but because of certain circumstances could not serve on a regular recreation commission that's municipal owned. So this is just really exciting. The, 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 the presentation is exciting, but the inclusivity and the ability to be flexible and remove barriers for people to participate in civic life is something that's close to what I, close to what I care about and want to do on council and is very exciting to me. So thank you to Dr. Jay and to Ms. Hind for all your hard work on this. This is really, really exciting.
And I guess my only concern about that building, on the last I knew, water was a concern like water fountains, the quality of water, going through that. Is that something that you are going to address or how would that come into play?
Yes, in fact, Ms. Mayor, we've already addressed much of that in, in, in much of the building. Jill and I are sitting in a classroom that's already been redone. It's got a new carpet on the floor. It's got new paint, new furniture. And we've been using 20 of the classrooms in this building all semester long because we had to spread out for COVID. I, I, you can't see, but there are, there are spots on the floor. Actually, I'm, I'm just going to show you real quick. You'll be able to see, see that dot on the floor?
Yes.
There are dots on the floor that say where the chairs are supposed to be to keep students appropriately socially distanced. But to answer your question about water, we've, we've installed new water fountains in the parts of the building that are occupied right now. And the plan for the renovation is to do a whole new water system throughout the building as well as sprinkler, fire suppression system and to, to connect the building potentially to our central plant so that the heating and cooling comes right from the campus.
Thank you for that information. So any other questions or comments from the council? So Jill and Dr. Jay, thank you so much for being here tonight with us to give us that presentation. I think that kind of helped answer a lot of the questions that many of us probably had running through our head as we saw this on the agenda. And like you said, you know, I'm sure many would prefer that we had a little bit more time to kind of mull this over and weigh the options, but we just don't have that. And so this was helpful to have this information in front of us. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we now going on to the public hearing? City Manager Snyder?
Yes, ma'am. You can go ahead and open the public hearing.
Okay, so for the 2021 budget, we had closed session on this. Well, it wasn't closed, but it was special meetings. So were you going to talk about this briefly or?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I promise I'll try not to interrupt it too many times.
Oh, you're fine.
So generally, the procedure with a public hearing is, is you'll open the public hearing and, and ask the public if they want to comment on, on the the sole subject of the hearing, which would be the budget. And then certainly the city manager can weigh in. And then after you close the hearing, generally the council is afforded an opportunity for comments and then, and then you're pretty much done with that.
Okay, my apologies. I just thought that the comments were after the budget, but.
That's a whole, that's a whole separate set of comments.
Okay. All right, so I guess we will open it up to public comment. Chief Kep, do we have anybody that would like to speak?
It does not appear we do.
Okay, then we'll turn it over to the budget items then. Is that correct? No?
Nope, since there's no public comment, generally you can go ahead and close the public comment section. This will be an agenda item at the December 21st meeting where you will vote on the actual budget. So nope, you can just go ahead and close the pub, public hearing, excuse me.
All right, so do I, is it a motion that I asked? Do I have a motion? Nope.
Nope, you don't. You just go ahead and close it. And then unless the council has any questions or comments about the, the budget that was the subject of the public hearing, you can move on to the next agenda item.
All right, so do we have any council comments or questions? All right, then we will close the public hearing portion. So then we will go on to the closed session.
Now you have the, now you have the first public comment section where the public can make comment on any of the agenda items for tonight's meeting.
Okay. No worries. Chief Kep, do we have anybody for these comments?
I'm still not seeing anyone looking to comment.
Okay.
No comments.
Okay, thank you, Chief Kep.
So now you just asked for a motion to go into closed session.
All right, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
They're moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so we'll move to closed session at this time.
Jill will need to take a roll call vote.
Okay.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lenou?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
And council members, you should have received a, a separate Zoom link from me for the public, for the closed session. So I will go ahead and start that meeting now.
Do we leave this one? Is that?
So everybody's back, is that correct?
You're still missing Councilwoman Reed, but you do have a quorum, so you can start if you want.
Okay, City Clerk Domingo roll call.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Lanu.
Here.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Here. Okay, so next item on the agenda is a consent calendar, is that correct, City Manager Snyder?
There's nothing actually on the consent calendar if we would have previous meeting minutes, that's where you would approve those, so you can just go ahead and start on the individual items of discussion, for discussion.
Okay, so on the individual items, so the first is the approval of a three-year contract for, with the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan, do we have a motion to approve?
Oh moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
You need to open up for discussion?
Yep. Are there any council comments, questions, discussion?
Mayor Snyder, I would just like to say, I just want to thank the T-Pom, it was, they were a pleasure to work with under a short timeframe that we did have, I'm just happy that we were able to come to an agreement on a three-year contract.
Any other comments? So since we've had a second, City Clerk Domingo, do you take roll call?
Yeah. Councilmember Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Yes.
Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Okay, so next item on the agenda is a consent calendar, is that correct, City Manager Snyder?
There's nothing actually on the consent calendar if we would have previous meeting minutes, that's where you would approve those, so you can just go ahead and start on the individual items of discussion, for discussion.
Okay, so on the individual items, so the first is the approval of a three-year contract for, with the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan, do we have a motion to approve?
Oh moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
You need to open up for discussion?
Yep. Are there any council comments, questions, discussion?
Mayor Snyder, I would just like to say, I just want to thank the T-Pom, it was, they were a pleasure to work with under a short timeframe that we did have, I'm just happy that we were able to come to an agreement on a three-year contract.
Any other comments? So since we've had a second, City Clerk Domingo, do you take roll call?
Yeah. Councilmember Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Yes.
Lanu. Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So second is the approved amended agreement for assessment services, do I have a motion to approve?
Oh moved.
Second.
Second.
Open up for discussion, question, comments?
I don't know, it's City Attorney Harkness, if you want to just provide a brief update, I believe it's just changing from a sole proprietorship with our current assessor to an LLC, so nothing is changing from the current contract other than the actual company name.
Yeah, this is literally just a change in the company name, it's the same parties involved, nothing is changing monetarily, this agreement takes effect January 1, and really just finishes up the current agreement that's in place that goes through June of 2021, at which point we'll bring forth probably a renewal.
So City Attorney Harkness, the only thing that I had noted on here, under the timeframe, it says January 1, 2021, and conclude June 30, 2021?
Correct, because this is the tail end of the existing agreement that was in place, like I said, the only thing we're really changing is the name, and so this just concludes the time period from the initial agreement, and then in June, or I should say rather, yeah, in June of 2021, the assessor and the council will negotiate a new contract for a new time period.
Okay. I'm just making a note here. All right, so any other questions, comments? City Clerk Domingo, take a roll call on this.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed. And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. We approved the Calhoun County inter-local agreement for county-designated assessors, do I have a motion to approve?
Oh moved.
Second. Open up for question, comments, concerns?
We'll share a little bit, Mayor, I'm just in accordance, our city assessor Joshua Cunningham is with us too, feel free to jump in if I am missing anything, but in accordance with Public Act 660 of 2018, it just requires every county to have a designated assessor on file with the state tax commission as of December 31, 2020. Aaron Powers of WCA Assessing has agreed to serve as the Calhoun County Designated Assessor, the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners approved this agreement on November 5, 2020. The agreement would go, would start January 1, 2021 through December 31 of 2025, just please note that the inter-local agreement must be returned back to the state tax commission no later than December 31, so I'm just recommending this for approval. City Assessor Josh Cunningham, do you, would you like to share anything at this time?
He is on here, and I just talked to him, but give me a second.
Looks like he's muted.
While, while he's trying to get unmuted, I just pointed out to council, there's, it was brought to our attention, there's one typo on page six under the first line of the non-discrimination clause, it says, the party's H-A-L-L, it should be shall, it doesn't really affect the effectiveness of the non-discrimination clause, but it is a typo, so just, I just recommend that the council approve the agreement with that change to the party shall rather than the party's hall.
And, and if I, if I read that correctly, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, that doesn't take place until 2022, so this was, this was something that was implemented in 2018, but it's not going to take an effect until 2022, and so every county in the entire state, it's required for them to have a designated assessor, I've done some research, asked around to some of, even Ed, who's on the contract with myself, for the city of Albion, who's been in the business with, you know, him and his wife both, probably close to 30 years each, then a couple other people, and they've had nothing but good things to say about Aaron Powers. And so I, I think what we were worried about or concerned about initially was whether there was going to be a retainer for retaining this designated assessor, and that's kind of what we were on the fence about, but there is not one, so we feel, we feel good about moving forward with Aaron Powers as the designated assessor, and so that is really So we feel, we feel good about moving forward with Erin Powers as the designated assessor, and so that is really, it's just in the event that something were to happen, if, if I were to pass, or if, and I think it's more designated for smaller townships over cities, but, you know, in the event that there's an AMAR, and I, I know when these, these audits are coming, there's going to be 2022, and so when they come and they do an audit, if there's anything that they find that's substantial, then there's going to be a corrective action plan, and then in the event that I would not be able to come up with a corrective action plan, which I just don't see that happening, then they would have, that would be their backup plan, would be good to go to the designated assessor, and that doesn't mean that the city of Albion necessarily has to take on the city with the designated assessor, they have a couple of the choices, one, the first one I wouldn't recommend, to allow the state take over the assessment role, and then the other one would be to hire another assessor, so there are options, they just want to have a backup plan in the event that, you know, something like this happened.
Thank you, Josh.
Welcome. Yep, nice meeting you.
You too. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Alright, City Clerk Domingo, roll call on this.
Councilmember Lawler.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor, just a point of clarification, is the council approving that with the typo correction?
Do I have to get a motion to approve with the correction?
So there was a motion to approve in a second, I, I can't remember who made the motion, but certainly somebody can accept that as a friendly amendment.
Colin. Colin, can you quickly say what that motion was, I just got back on.
The motion was to approve the Calhoun County inter-local agreement for the designated assessor.
I made the motion, and I do accept the minor changes that were made to it for the corrections, so.
Okay, City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Lawler. Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. To the MERS Defined Benefit Addendum, do I have a motion to approve?
Oh moved.
Second?
Second.
Council comments, questions, concerns?
Mayor, if I could just share a little on this, I'm just, MERS is just requesting update and information in regards to the wages submitted for employees enrolled in a city-defined benefit retirement plan. This will be effective for wages submitted after January 1, 2021, please note the divisions for which the city still submits wages for are the Albion Clerical Alliance Union Group, the Ask Me, currently now T-POM or our DPW employees, and then the Albion Housing Commission, all of our defined benefit plans are currently closed, so this is just recommended approval.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. So the next item is our discussion on the approval of the 2021 Albion Recreation Department Services, so I don't need a motion to discuss, correct? No, I will be, yep, laying out two different options, and then ultimately I'll leave to council to make their motion on guess which route you would like to go. So to continue on discussions from last Thursday's study session, as you're all aware, the city of Albion currently has an agreement in place with Marshall Public Schools for the use of the Marshall Opportunity Schools, where we host our recreation activities, as we know, COVID has had a significant impact on our recreation department, all of our current recreation staff are furloughed, with the exception of the Recreation Director. So for 2021, I guess I've offered two options, one is we renew the agreement with Marshall Public Schools to continue the use of the Marshall Opportunities School, we kind of continue operations as is, with the exception of the addition of the farmer's market to the, into the recreation department. If we continue to operate as is, I will evaluate some of the current recreation positions to kind of incorporate that farmer's market piece to it. And then just to follow up with the presentation, we all heard earlier this evening from Joe Heine and Dr. Johnson regarding the YMCA. As you're aware, the YMCA has offered several programs throughout our community over the last few months, the second option would just kind of build and enhance on those programs, so we would enter into an agreement with the Battle Creek YMCA, they would handle all recreation programs for our community, they would be free to all Albion residents. With that, all city recreation positions would be eliminated, with the exception of one, a new position would be created, and that would be the Farmer's Market slash Special Projects Coordinator. As you're aware, the Recreation Department offers the Daddy Daughter Dance, Mother-Son Dance, Easter Icon, and other special community events, and I do not want that part to, we lose that part of the recreation program if we do decide to go to partner with the YMCA, so if we do go down that route, we will have just one city recreation staff, and they will handle the farmer's market and those special events, so with that, I will open it up to any comments or any discussion, and leave it to council to see which route you would like to move for 2021.
Let me go with Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, um, can you, okay, it says that the current recreation positions will be evaluated to incorporate a farmer's market and coordinator. So what, can you tell me what that picture would look like if we took over the farmer's market?
Yeah, so currently the farmer's market falls under our EDC, Laura Overhall, who normally runs the farmer's market, she left, received a position elsewhere and has left state, I believe, right in the middle of our, this past season, our farmer's market season, so we have not, we have posted for a farmer's market coordinator under the EDC, we have not had any, so applicants apply, and so we are just trying to come up with, how can we still offer a farmer's market within our community, because I think that is a vital resource and thing to offer within our community, so we don't want to lose that piece. So we do have three part-time recreation employees, as well as Director Williams, so if we were to remain as is and utilize the Marshall Opportunity School, one of the part-time positions, I would kind of just look at one of those positions, see if they would be interested in filling that farmer's market coordinator role, they would be responsible for facilitating our farmer's market, which occurs in the spring and early summer, and summer months on Wednesdays.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes.
What happens with swimming, if we go with the Y?
Yep.
It's going to still be able to have swimming at the Opportunity School?
It would not be at the Opportunity School, it would be at the Dow Center with Albion College, as you were, the college is kind of a partner with that YMCA, with the YMCA. So Dr. Johnson has agreed to allow us to utilize the Dow Center to continue to offer the Learn to Swim, Water Aerobics, lifeguard training and safety training, because that is a very important part of our recreation program.
Councilman Williamson, if you have question or comment?
I think Councilmember Clark had one before me.
Okay. Councilwoman Clark?
Okay, excuse me, I have to get the music in the background. Okay, I'm sorry, I have a grandchild, so first question is, so if, if those three positions would be eliminated, then how would that affect our budget? What would that look like, what would that, because I'm not familiar with this, so where would those funds move to, this automatically be submitted over to the YMCA for whatever reasons, or what would happen with that?
Nope, the funds would stay within the Recreation Fund, our Recreation Department had run out of its own fund, the Recreation Fund, and that is all solely funded by the Recreation Village. So the funds from those three positions would remain in that fund, and they would go towards that new farmer's market special projects coordinator position, as well as the other events and things that we would offer to the community.
So, so I guess I need to know more specific, so you said you have a director and three part-times employees?
Correct.
I, I would think that the new positions would not be paid the same, or wouldn't have the same status, is that correct?
It would be one position, if we go into the route with the YMCA, there would only be one position, we would create one full-time farmer's market special project coordinator position.
And the, the, the expense would be different, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and this is another question off the wall, but is it understood, is this, it was brought to my attention that our current contract with Marshall Public Schools, whenever we utilize the building or wanted to utilize the building, we had to pay for that, we had to pay them to use our own buildings, is that correct? For instance, when we wanted to do some of the things with COVID and things like that, it was my understanding that there was going to be a fee assessed to that if we went into that building.
I'm not sure about any additional fee, I've not been made aware of us having to pay for any additional use of that facility, outside of the $25,000 agreement that we currently have in place.
Okay, could you follow up with that, just to make sure, because in the future, before we do anything with that, so we can make sure that that is not something that's happening, and wouldn't maybe overlooking it and not realizing it, or something like that?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lanu.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I, so I'm thinking along the lines of the positions that are shifting, and the fact that the Y has indicated they're dedicated to hiring local for the positions that will be created, if that is the route that we take, so that was just something I wanted to highlight. I also wanted to inquire about this role with the farmer's market and the special programs, to the extent that it is possible and reasonable, it seems like those are seasonal work, and we have a lot of different needs that maybe would be incorporated, I mentioned in our study session, the need for grant writing and communications, and it seems like with both the special events and the farmer's market, those are things that could use more promotion and outreach, so those are just ideas in terms of really being able to have this potentially seasonal job, actually, you know, have, have work year-round, that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, but Councilman Wilson, I mean Williamson should be before me.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay, so I have to tell you that this is a very, very exciting, the Y option, the partnership with City College nonprofit is really, really exciting. You know, I view it as an expansion of what we are able to do, we're maximizing our dollars spent, so we're saving money on one end with the building, at the, you know, the rent that we pay at the one building, we're still retaining a position at the city to coordinate other functions like the farmer's market, that can only grow, we're opening up the city to more opportunity for more funding from funders when we do things like this, and then the collaboration between the college, the YMCA, and the city opens us up to even bigger funding sources, instead of just our local funding sources, so this could be transformational for our entire community, I want to recognize that this is a sharp shift in priorities at the college level, as well reopening their facilities to the public, the citizens of Albion is an incredible step forward for our community in improving our town and gown relations, and I am just thrilled that this is an option that we could have going forward, and so I, if I were, if I were asked about today, I would be a strong advocate for the work of the YMCA with the city and the college, and I'm really excited to see that happen, so that's, that's, those are my comments on this issue, looking forward to seeing how we can just grow and expand all of the opportunities in Albion for everyone, so thank you.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes, clarification. So there were two, one or, one of the other options, correct? And so when you spoke of the farmer's market with the high school, and that was talking about with the director or a position, and then still having some of the activities they had in the past, is that was that, did I understand that?
Correct.
Or basically just shifting all over to the YMCA, which everything would be held at the Washington Gardner, correct?
Yep.
Nothing would be held over at the Opportunity School anymore?
Correct, so if we shift to the YMCA, it would be held between the Washington Gardner building, as well as the Dow facility to utilize the pool for the water programs that we offer, and then we would utilize our city parks, we have many parks here within our community that we would be able to utilize to offer other, other programs throughout the year.
Okay, so, another question, so if we switch to YMCA, then we still would not have to pay for anything, that $25,000, do we still have to pay for that $25,000, are we still holding a half and half partnership with Marshall, with that building?
That is up, I'm leaving that up to council to call, right now, I will note, we have, to be honest, we have not been able to utilize the building for majority of the year, with COVID, no fault to Mark, there are emergency orders and restrictions in place, Marshall Public Schools has the restrictions in place, and we have not been able to utilize the facility. I would hate for another year to pass by, and we are still unable to offer programs or utilize a facility when we have entered into an agreement upon, I do want to note, this is our final year of our Recreation Village. So I think we need to be wise on what we do utilize, use these funds for, as we would need to, this is the final year, are we going to renew this Recreation Village, or are we not going to have that village to provide recreation program? So with all that said, I just, I, I want to be smart on 2021, the direction that we take, and I just wouldn't, I wouldn't hate to waste another year and not be able to offer solid recreation programming.
I think that's more clearly when we speak of both of the buildings, so everybody can get a general that we would be, we will be taking away the $25,000, that would not be on our backs if we did decide to go with the YMCA, correct? Alright. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Lanu.
Thank you, just a point of clarification, I thought I recalled Mrs. Heinz saying that we would still require, still be required to pay $25,000 to use the Washington Gardner School.
It would not be $25,000 specific towards the school, that would be built into the actual agreement between the Y and the city.
Thank you.
Councilman Williamson?
So just, so, and Haley, I just, I want to make sure we have this crystal clear, because we always run into issues, sorry, City Manager Snyder, I, I just know you, so I'm sorry. These meetings in the formalities, so just want to be clear, so if we go in the Y direction, we're actually going to save money on the rent that we pay to Marshall Public Schools, so we're not going to be paying for that anymore, because our facilities will now have expanded and shifted, so there will be new facilities at Washington Gardner, there will be opened up facilities at the college for our use, and there will be no need to pay rent in the sum of $25,000 to Marshall Public Schools, and so not only with the Y option are we, are we getting expanded opportunities, bigger plans, more programming, we're also getting a cost savings on facilities and getting kind of that off of our, out of our liabilities, and I, I just want to make sure we were clear on that, on that, so basically, so yes, that's, I just want to make sure there's some clarity around that going forward, so we're, we're. So we're, we're, we're going to save money on one side, and we're going to have expanded opportunities on another. So I'm really, that's, that's, that's really crystal clear. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Can anyone, if Mrs. Heinz is still on the line, can she kind of break down to the, to the council what this $115,000 includes? Because I think some of them, some of us, including myself, I'll speak for myself, I am confused.
A point of interest, Dr. Jay and Ms. Heinz are on the call. So hopefully they can be here to answer questions.
Dr. Jay, you're on mute.
Hi, what, can you, what was the question?
Are you able to tell us about the $115,000, what all that includes?
Yep, I think that was inclusive of the salaries for the local staff and any supplies that would be, as, as an example, we, when we were running hip hop stuff, we were bringing steps weekly, you know? So we would purchase supplies that Albion doesn't have. And then there would be some, some of that money that we would work out the rental with Albion College for Washington Gardner. But all of that would be inclusive in the total that was presented.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Clark?
Just, if I could just add something. You know, the college receives federal funding each year for a program called Federal Work Study, which is money that the college must use to employ students. And some portion of that money must be used to employ students who are going to work in the community. However, it's very hard for us to do that with the city. It's very easy for us to do that with another nonprofit. So this also will allow the college to leverage that federal funding to help resource college students being mentors and staff members to the YMCA to help increase programming. So I just wanted to let everyone know that as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
So I remember in the first presentation with the YMCA, when they came to Albion and we were down in the city hall building, there was a presentation brought forward about this same thing. And there was a statement made, if I remember correctly, that, that, because she had mentioned grant writers or having a grant writer and stuff, and I was under the, but I believed at that time, what I heard her say was that she, there wouldn't be a problem with doing that and that she could do that and write the grants and everything else. But now I hear her saying that she would have to have a, a grant writer for this facility. So what changed? When she first presented to us in, when I first was on council and she came to city hall and it was talked about.
Was that me that presented?
It was talked about, yeah, it was you.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what, can you clarify the thing about the grant writers?
Because you had mentioned about, when you were talking about positions and when you were doing your presentation, you mentioned about a grant writer in that. I thought I heard that correctly. If anybody else heard it when she was first starting, they were talking about a grant writer to be able to write the grants and so forth for this area. So.
There's no grant writer in the current presentation at all.
Yeah, we wouldn't need that. I mean, we, we both have people on staff that are able to do that. So we wouldn't have to create that position within this particular MOU.
That's what, that's what I want to clarification for. Yes, yes, okay. I misheard. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for either Jill or Dr. Jay? Other comments in general?
So I guess I would just express that I'm also very excited about this partnership. If it could come to fruition, for those of you that know me, know my passion in regards to providing services, activities, opportunities for our youth. So I think this will expand what we can currently offer under the kind of program we have right now. The only thing I would like to have an assurance on, Dr. Jay, you know, I know in the past, having an ID was critical to get on campus, to get into the facilities, especially the Dow. Now, I haven't been in the Dow since it's been renovated. So I don't know if there's any different entrances to the pool itself. But I guess I would just like to get some type of assurance that if we do move forward with this, you know, because the pool would be a big part of it, that the students would be able to have access to the Dow without any complications.
Yes, they will be able to have access to the Dow. There will, there will have to be some rules around when and how because we need to make sure everyone is safe. And as long as they follow those rules, then, then there should not be a problem. We may even be able to generate community IDs, I'm not sure yet. We'll be exploring all, all of those potential possibilities so that folks know who's in the facility as well.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Clark?
I'm so sorry, but I, I have to speak for, for my precinct because there's a lot of youth that used to attend at the high schools and do certain activities when they were available or just to have some place to go and not were, not all the time. Those behaviors were necessarily behaviors people would like to see or want around, but it was a place for them to go and hang out. And I'm a little bit fearful that when it enters into Albion College, that it's going to change and these students are going to be pushed out because of behaviors. So I'm wondering, what have you got? So I'm, can I finish, please?
Yeah, sure.
So I'm wondering if what it, what you would or what you're going to have in place to help those type of students be able to adjust to the atmosphere of, of the college.
So I'm going to let Jill talk about how the Y handles that kind of behavior because they would be, the YMCA would be the in charge organization at the time, not the college. And I should also say that the space within Washington Gardner that would become the Y would be the Y's space to manage. It's not the college's space to manage. So if the Y decided to have a drop-in center that was 24/7 here, that would be up to them. And they would be the ones taking care of that space, not the college. In terms of the swimming pool and on campus, you know, we'll, we will work out with the advisory board, a set of policies and protocols that govern the use of the pool. And then the YMCA will use the pool during that time period, and the YMCA will be responsible for the students during that time period. What I have seen firsthand in the YMCA in Battle Creek is that the Y staff do a very good job of facilitating and making space for students and helping them to, to get along with each other and making sure that they are, they have a, a place to be themselves. And so I would expect that they would do the same thing in this community. In terms of the broader campus, I can speak only to that to say that, you know, I've started an initiative there since I got here called the Blueprint for Belonging, which requires every single office on campus to generate by March a written public plan for how it will contribute to diversity, equity, and inclusion on campus that they will be held accountable for. It is not only a diversity offices issue, it is, it is an issue across campus. And that means making the campus open to the community and making the campus open to a much wider range of, of what folks believe is acceptable behavior so that we can welcome people to the campus and become part of the community. So that's the college's orientation, but it would be the Y that would be managing student behavior in particular.
Right, and I would just add, along with that, that really part of what the Y is, is about relationships. And so in terms of the local staff that we would hire, there, we have them build relationships with the students. And then also there's some mentoring programs that get built into what we do. And so, you know, obviously, we need to keep a, a safe facility, but in that is kind of building relationships with the students to do that.
Councilman Williamson?
So I, I want to, I don't, I think one of the things that City Manager Snyder has done tonight is given us the opportunity to speak on, on these options. And so there are a couple of things we can do tonight. So we can move and approve her to move in any one of these directions. So someone can make a motion to say, I move to direct City Manager Snyder to work with the Y and develop a partnership for city recreation, or we could choose a different option. Or if we're not ready to make a move on that, although I, I am, but I want to make sure everyone is included, we could get the general consensus of council tonight, which is everyone can go around and say what direction they'd like to go in. In, in, in an interest, in, in the interest of being a, a partner on that, I'm, I'm going to say I do want to move in the direction of having City Manager Snyder develop a relationship with the Y for recreation. And I would, I would be a supporter of my colleagues if we were going to make a motion to approve her to do that. And, and the reason I am kind of, not kind of very supportive of this is I want to make sure we provide City Manager Snyder with some clear direction from council on how to move. And then also recognizing some of the time constraints that we have on the rent and things like that with the Watson School property. So with that, I yield, but I'm looking to, I yield.
There was a question from a comment, and I, from a member of the public, and I just would like to, to note that the pool would be accessible to seniors as well as youth. So all ages would be, have access to the pool facility.
Yes, I think our intention would be, in addition to running swim lessons and then training local youth to be lifeguards, but also to run the water aerobics classes. And there are some senior-focused water classes that we do, and those would be available.
Okay, so I take it that I would ask for a motion to proceed with working with the YMCA for our recreational activities?
So moved?
Okay.
Do a second?
Councilmember Reed seconded.
Okay, and so do we have further discussions at this point on this? Okay, so City Clerk Domingo, would you take a roll call?
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
You're on mute, Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lenou?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
So then with this, get put on our next agenda, like to finalize this contract?
Yep, I will be working with Jill with the YMCA and as well as Albion College to kind of come up with a formal agreement moving forward. And then I will bring that back to council for, for approval.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody, for your willingness to voice your input. And we appreciate, again, Jill and Dr. Jay for being here with us to help clarify these points.
Thank you so much.
All right, so future agenda items? Any items that we want to have brought to the next agenda? Is that kind of what we're asking for here?
Yep.
Councilwoman Clark?
I think I'm getting real comfortable now. But there's a few things, there's a few things that I have mentioned that have not been addressed in the past, and I'm bringing back up. One, I asked for, I understand why the EDC couldn't be in this meeting because it was too soon. But I wanted to make sure that that was still being, that she was going to come and make up an update at the, at our next meeting. I would also like for the land bank to come in. I, well, speaking with someone, and there's a concern about how they're denied. So I want to know the process of when someone, or like to give more clarification for people that are trying to buy properties here in the town that they own, the land bank owns. What's the procedure and how they're denied? And, and how, just how that's handled? Another thing is, we were going to have that, me and Shane, and we had talked to Haley also about, you know, having a city hall, a town hall meeting, and we couldn't do it because COVID took a spike and things like that. I still would like to have Chief Kiff come in, Kiff come in and explain because it's still up in the air, a lot of ways of some of the procedures and things that are done going forward about when something happens. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk and a lot of unnecessary talk and a lot of unnecessary uneasiness about the recent shootings and things that have happened in the districts and the protocol with that. So to kind of let people understand, you know, their position, just for clarification. And I had also mentioned the inventory of this equipment that we are not using and where we're at with that. And how much do we have? And what does it look like as far as what we would be able to, be able to obtain? As on the positive side, if we got rid of some of that equipment?
I know, actually, the Public Service Department, they were in the process of doing inventory. They started that at the end of last week. So that is, they're in the process of doing that, collecting that information.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other?
I just.
Councilwoman Clark?
For the new. Yes, for the new members, if you go on the website on MML, they're having new members training times and dates set up on there. I don't know if anybody's looked at that yet. I went on the other day. But that would be probably good and helpful. And then I think we need to get the time set for our, our study session or whatever it is we're going to call it for Mayor Pro Tim.
So the three newly elected have already been engaged in training through MML. We have another session tomorrow night. So in regards to scheduling a meeting for Saturday, do we discuss that at this time to agree upon a specific time?
Is it? Okay.
Would, would people prefer a morning meeting, afternoon, or evening?
Morning.
Okay, so like 10:00 AM, would that work? 10:00 AM Saturday?
Yep.
Can, can we, can we do a doodle poll for the study session, please?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Lawler, you kind of broke up. I didn't hear what you said.
Can we do a doodle poll for different times that are available?
Okay.
But that's, well, what time would you like?
Well, I was asking because my parents have COVID and I'm trying to help them. So I'm, I'm just was asking, with a sincere heart, can we just do a doodle poll? It gives me time to conversate with my mother and my father to see what, what, what they, what their needs are.
Okay, so you just don't want a set of time right now?
Oh, yeah, that's why I asked for a doodle poll, please? Yeah, that's why I asked for a doodle poll, please?
I can send, I will send one out to everyone with a few days and times and we can get something scheduled here tomorrow.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Any other items we want to be placed on the next agenda?
No more than, as she spoke of the, the, I wanted to make sure that the DDA, the explanation about the DDA and also the chamber, also what Councilman Clark was speaking about, goes on the agenda for the next time, too. I think I've already kind of stressed some of that, so I'm quite sure you understand.
Okay, so I guess at this time, we can open it up to public comments again. Chief Kip, do we have anybody that would like to speak at this time?
I am not seeing anyone.
Okay, thank you. So City Managers Report, City Manager Snyder?
Yes, so y'all should have received a copy of my City Manager Report, starting off with City Hall operations. As you know, we are currently closed to the public through tomorrow, December 8. And we do have tomorrow morning, we have a county COVID update, so I will be attending that meeting to see what the numbers are within our area. And I will be sending out an update on City Hall operations tomorrow afternoon on if we will remain closed or if we will be reopening to the public. I do want to provide an update. I know Councilmember Jackson, she just mentioned this, on the merger of the EDC, DDA, and Albin Chamber. As we had a joint study session on my November 18th to continue the discussion on the possibility of the merging of the three entities. The board chairs all agreed to report back to their full boards to discuss and take action on the following. Each board was to appoint a board volunteer to represent their board in ongoing discussions. And they would need to vote and decide if they would like to put forward a financial commitment to assist in funding the structural development of a new nonprofit management organization. As you're aware, Richard Lindsay attended the last study session and he did note that it would take roughly about $5,000 to, for this whole process on creating a new organization. I will say that the DDA, they have met and they have allocated $2,000 out of their 2021 budget to put forward, to put towards this discussion. And they did vote to have Emily Verbecky as their point of contact. The chamber met and I believe Emily Reiman, not Emily Reiman, I'm sorry, Amy Reiman, Emily is her daughter, Amy Reiman, as their point of contact. The EDC appointed her McCall as their point of contact. And then from the study session, they asked if I would represent the city. So the conversations are continuing on discussing a merger of those entities. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, they held their first meeting on Monday, November 23rd. We met via Zoom webinar. The discussion, the commission, we just discussed the tight timeline for revising and submitting a revised master plan to the state of Michigan by the February 1, 2021 deadline. I'm in tree services, tree service work, you will all be happy to hear, has started and will continue. We have come up with a list of dangerous trees identified throughout the city and we are working with our tree vendor to kind of address some of those issues. And then I, what I did send out an email to council earlier today, but I would like to note, very exciting news for the city of Albion. We received notice today that the North Albion Street Bridge was selected for full replacement in 2023. That project is estimated at $1.7 million. So that is very exciting for the city to receive that grant funding to replace that bridge. So we are very excited news to start off a week. And that is all I have.
That is great news. Any questions for City Manager Snyder and her reports? Thank you, City Manager Snyder. At this time, I will open it up to Councilmember comments. Councilman Williamson?
I just want to say congratulations to all the new council members. Welcome to a fun ride on council. To be on it with you all. Congratulations, Mayor Snyder. We don't say mayor-elect anymore. I'm very excited to make some positive changes for the city. I just, I'm just excited to work with each and every single one of you. So congratulations to the new, the new public servants and looking forward to it all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lully?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, I just want to ask if, if we are not speaking, can we turn, can we mute our microphones? It's a distraction. I myself, too, am going to follow the rules, but I just wanted to put that out there a little bit.
Councilwoman Lanu?
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you, Shane Williamson, and congratulations to the city for the North Street Albion Bridge. I know that was a priority. And I'm very excited to see that that will be happening. I also want to thank the outgoing public officials for all of their service and congratulate the other two incoming members. And just convey my, my excitement for being here and my willingness to hear from and listen to everybody who is concerned about our community. I really think it's important to acknowledge that our roles are not, if not the community, we're not here unless the community is in partnership with us. And so I just want to thank everybody who is working diligently right now on behalf of the city.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah, I would like to also, I'm very excited to hear about the Albion Bridge. That is very good news. Congratulations to all of us. And I also was out in my area in my precinct today and the men were out and looking at the sewers and measuring the streets and putting their landmarks and things down. That made me very excited today because I know we're moving forward into fixing those streets as soon as possible in the first part of the year. And even some of the residents in that area was happy to see that going forward, because it's been a long time coming. I am happy to see the, like, the diversity that we have on council. It's a good feeling. I'm feeling pretty good about this and I'm looking forward to working with you guys throughout the next four years.
Awesome, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes, I'm just, I'm excited and I just have to give honor to God first. And I'm excited to be able to work with every last one of you. Thank you, Shane, for certain comments and I appreciate you for uplifting me in certain areas. And I want to thank every last one of you. I'm excited to work with you and I do see change just in our conversations that we're having. And I want to thank the public, I want to thank Precinct 3 and my family for just basically believing and trusting in me. And I just want to tell Precinct 3 of all, thank you for trusting me and believing in me to do a good job for the precinct. And I'm just excited to work with every last one of you for the city of Albion.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. So I, too, would like to take this time to, again, show my heartfelt appreciation to Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Spicer, and Mayor Atchison. I've had the opportunity to talk with Councilman Smith since the election. I expressed to him how I realize, you know, what type of time, energy that goes into serving the public. So I did express my appreciation to him at this time. But just to let them know that, you know, to serve the entire community, you know, that takes a special person. So I just wanted to acknowledge that even though I did the formal proclamation, just from the heartfelt side of it, to know that I appreciated their time. Again, you know, I am excited to be here with all of you. I thank you for your patience with me during this first virtual meeting. I'm sure it would have gone a little bit easier if we were in person. But it will go quicker, I am sure, as we get a little bit more accustomed to how this will all roll out. So again, I just thank you all. Since we didn't have any absent members, we don't need to do a roll call on that. So at this point, City Clerk Domingo, do you want to do the final roll call?
Councilmember Clark?
Is this a motion to adjourn? Sorry to interrupt.
No, do we do the roll call before we do the motion to adjourn?
I'm confused by this roll call.
So I guess then a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Okay.
Awesome. So I will call it adjourned at 9:21 PM. So City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes, good night, all.
Good night.